Regular council meeting to session. Roll, roll call please.
Atkins.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Mizell. Mutchler.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
Okay, invocation by Reverend Don Anderson, then followed by the pledge.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight, we are so thankful for your many blessings. Thank you for this beautiful day that you've given to our community. And Lord, thank you for our leaders who stand before us tonight. For we just ask that you give them wisdom, courage, and discernment as they make the decisions that would be in the best interest of the community and will glorify you. And Father, we also ask that you watch over and protect and, and just encourage and keep safe for those who are the first responders, police, fire, and EMS in our community, for the city workers who continue to labor every day. And Lord, for our town, we just ask your continued blessings upon it. And Lord, we ask tonight also that you would just be with this meeting, Lord, that you would just, uh, that you would bless it, and that it would be to your glory, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to public comments. Can't read some of the names, so, um, is it JT? Okay. Come up. What was the last name?
Masheany.
Masheany.
I had an answer, I thought maybe it would be a little better if you all could see what I'm trying to talk to you about. First of all, you know, we're not opposed to that addition to the, uh, two.
Mr. Airport, um, you should probably ask anybody that wishes to speak on the various, uh, plats to do so during the public hearing for those. So that they're recorded as part of the record for that, as opposed to doing here, I mean, he's free to speak, but I just, there is an appropriate time for him to have another opportunity to speak that's directly relevant to that legislation.
Okay? So during the, the meeting? Okay, all right. If, if y'all have comments about, uh, any of these, about the plats and that, there would be a public hearing on down in the agenda, which would be the appropriate time to, for y'all to do that. If, if you would want to wait until that.
Whatever you say.
Okay, I think that would move it along better.
Okay.
All right, thank you. You, we'll still let you talk, JT. All right, uh. Consent agenda, have approval minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell and Evans.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Can I skip the, uh, proclamation for the Arbor Day? Uh, so I'll read that now. Proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed the, to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Protent Bob Garner, City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five Arbor Day. And City of Lebanon urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts and to protect our trees and woodlands. In witness thereof, I have here set unto my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lebanon to be affixed this day, twenty-fifth day of March, twenty-twenty-five, and the mayor will sign this.
I think one of those is just a public comment. Right here, I think Tina's.
Okay.
Her public comment probably not about what was hearing.
Tina, you have a public comment instead of, about the hearing? Okay, go ahead. State. Hey!
You answered that question, didn't you?
I've been replaced. Thank you, buddy. Tina's doing this, and then they've got two for public hearing.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Tina Gilbert, twenty-two oh nine, Audrey Lane, um, I was here last council meeting, and, um, you guys addressed my situation, uh, very well, and I appreciate what you've done. I've been working with Harrison, um, if you go by and look at the place next to me, it looks day and night difference. So now we hope that, uh, they keep their loud music down, and they've even cleaned up all the trash where they've been burning, and, and so hopefully there's no more open burning. So I just wanted to thank you for addressing it, and Chief Harrison for working with me and getting it under control.
Good.
So.
Glad it worked out.
Awesome. Thank you, Tina. All right, let me get my bearings here, sorry, uh, apologize, had a commitment with my son, so I had to, uh, attend that.
Ready for public hearing.
So, uh, public hearings where we're at, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
We'll make a motion that we go into public hearing.
Second.
Mitchell moved, and who was the second, Evans, Atkins?
Yeah.
Sorry. A roll call please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, we're now in public hearing regarding several final plats and a rezoning. Go ahead, Christina.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, um, tonight we'll start with the final plat of the I, the ISC billboard at fifteen sixty East Route sixty-six. And, uh, I think you have the copy in the roots being placed in that center, kind of in between the I forty-four and the Frontage Road. It's on C one there, it's, it needs to be, property must be properly platted to do new construction for the billboard. It has, Mo, MoDOT has issued a signed permit, so it has the approval for that. No problem with this. It's been passed by P and Z.
P and Z as well, okay. So we're in public hearing, any, uh, public comments regarding the final plat of ISC billboard? Seen no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next one.
Um, the next one is the final plat of a replat of Lot Twelve and South Half at Lot Eleven, Block Sixteen of Lewis Addition on four eighteen Harwood Avenue. Um, this, it's ours to residential district, and it must be properly platted for any new construction. It is the, uh, if you look on the thing, it's joining a two lots to one lot in order to get the proper width of the lot to do construction. Again, we have the G S map depiction and the plat, and we see no issues with this request.
What's going to be the disposition of the other half of the, of the lot?
What's what?
The other, half of the other lot that's, that's been cut in two, is that going to go to the next one, or?
Yeah, it's kind of how the lots are previously done back in the day, and it's.
Will, will that be tied onto the other one, because it's too small to bill on now, though, isn't it? Okay, good enough.
The darker line is what the complete.
Right, yeah.
New survey is.
I didn't want to leave that little piece out there in no man's land.
It'll be, yeah, no, it'll go to the next property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're in public hearing, uh, anybody regarding final plat and replat of Lot Twelve? Seen no one come forward, we'll move on.
The next one here, we're going to have two, kind of, well, we're going to final plat of Ridge Creek Phase One subdivision at eleven hundred block of Daytona Drive. We'll start with that one, we're kind of doing both, but, um, what that entails is, it's the continuation of a preliminary subdivision that was, um, created probably about twenty years ago. And, uh, we had a new owner purchase this property and wants to continue that subdivision, so that's what we're looking at. So he's doing a Phase One and Phase Two. He has, he has prob, he has properly platted it for new construction. He meets all the criteria that we request for subdivisions. It's our S one district, you know, he meets everything, we don't see any issue with it. So that's, that's both of them for Phase One and Phase Two, we'll kind of gather them together if that's okay. The twenty-four hundred block of South Jeff, or, hang on, I'm jumping down too far. The Phase Two is the fifteen hundred block of Rolling Hills Road. And so I know, I know we have some people here with discussions on that.
Okay.
But the, the preliminary plat was never, the preliminary subdivision was never platted. So when you see Phase One and Phase Two of the preliminary plat, we do have plats of those. So when we continue a preliminary plat of a subdivision, we plat each section as we go along as it platted. And that's what we're doing tonight with these two subdivision pieces.
Okay, and, um, I think, is it JT? Is that correct? Uh, had signed in here to talk about this as well, so if you want to come forward and talk about that this time?
Thanks. Do I have a time limit?
Three minutes.
If you try to keep it to three minutes, that'd be great.
Okay. Well, we'll just do as best we can.
Okay.
Uh, residents of Daytona Drive are asking that Phase One preliminary Ridge Creek plat be modified by closing or removing Rockingham Road. There are several reasons for this, but primarily, it's about safety for the residents already living on Daytona and future residents of Darlington. The majority of owners on Daytona chose this street because it was a dead-end street, which allows for more of a community-friendly feel, safety for users to walk, exercise, ride bikes, play some sport. Research shows most people prefer a dead-end street or a single entrance, um, to reduce traffic, more security for illegal, from illegal activity. We want to be very clear, we, we wholeheartedly welcome the addition of homes and families on Daytona Drive. However, the cross-street of Rockingham is a very real concern for the residents here. We request council support to prohibit Rockingham Road or any named street to be a cross-street or through-street onto Daytona Drive. Planning and zoning repeatedly, repeatedly told us at the meeting that they could not tell a developer what to do or their property, but at the end of this meeting, they added the requirement of a turnaround on Daytona, uh, which is certainly needed. And prohibited connecting Rockingham to Darlington, which negated our purpose of prohibiting a cross-street into Daytona for the safety of the residents of Daytona and future residents of Darlington. Planning and zoning said they could only look at what is requested at time of approval, Phase One and Two of Ridge Creek, not a total project. How can they effectively, effectively provide insight for the city long-range and, and the developer by looking at only fifteen percent of the expected total project? If that is correct, the next phase that connects to Ridge Creek Phase Two will probably connect to Rockingham to Darlington. If Rockingham is approved now, we of course fear it will prove, it will be approved to be a, it will be proved to be a through-street onto Darlington within a few years, creating much more traffic flow. With the addition of fifteen-plus homes on Daytona and possibly thirty-five homes on Darlington, if the original platform, the nineties, is followed, uh, that's what's going to happen. The other, another question is, not a question, this is a question, is the mayor's nineteen ninety-eight signed plat legally enforceable if it's never been recorded at the county recorder's office? Anybody got a grasp on that? Because it, it hasn't been recorded, but it's been re-signed by the, okay. During some research, we discovered ninety-eight, the ninety-eight plat signed by Mayor Allen was not filed with the county recorder. With that thought, when did Rockingham Road become a city street in Lebanon? Uh, where would we find documentation for that? It does not appear on any of the street maps we have found or the list of streets provided online. But it has been repeatedly been told to us that it's a city street. It's a gravel and appear to be just a turnaround for Daytona traffic. If it is a city street, why is the developer paying for the building, a city street instead of the city? The short version, which gets longer, the short, short version is we welcome the new neighbors and appreciate the developer providing more housing for Lebanon, but beg you to deny any cross-street or through-street between Daytona to Darlington for safety. We have been told that an egress is needed on new development, but most recent subdivision was built just down the street on Fairview by the developer that is, that is building Ridge Creek. And there is a, not a turnaround or egress on it, nor one on the future plan of Ridge Creek for Sonoma Drive, that's the furthest road north. And it's just, it has been noted numerous times that the developer is not changing any of the plans from their original ninety-eight plat map. Could it be in the best interest of city development that developers submit updated map, plat maps? It's an egress to, if an egress is in the best interest of newer subdivisions versus submitting antiquated plat maps from twenty years ago. And it's been stressed by the developer and the city employees that he is not altering the antiquated plat map. Perhaps you can understand our confusion, there's been some, been much progress in design and development in the last twenty years. Could it be that a newer plan would be beneficial to the city and the developer as well? Just food for thought. We appreciate your time and earnest consideration for the safety, privacy, protection, and peace of Daytona residents, present and future. Please understand, this is not about resistance to change, but about maintaining the continuation of safety, peace, protection, privacy that has been proven for over twenty years here on Daytona. And the desire that the new families on Darlington and Sonoma will be insured the same privileges we have. Perhaps some of our council members have or do live on a dead-end street, and I agree with the benefits of living there. The last part is our, our concerns are Rolling Hill Raceway needs some help, everybody knows that. With, with the increase of sixty-seven homes in the future, there is a real need for a plan sooner than later. Increase of traffic by building, buildings, supply trucks, concrete trucks, buses, heavy equipment, you name it, uh, plus expansion near Rolling Hills Road. Residents need a safe road into and out of, out of Lebanon. That's, I had some more, but that's enough. We're, that's what we're asking for, is, is to be able to have our, continue our street. Daytona's going to be lengthened by about fifteen more houses. I was told today there's a limit on how long one street can be, a dead-end street, I, I didn't get the, the amount of houses. But out of the twenty-two houses that are existing there now, twenty-one of them have signed our petition that we deliver to the, uh, planning and zoning. And it's, we're all asking for the same thing, we just want to keep it a dead, dead-end street, no cut-throughs, no racetracks, nothing, that's what we're asking for. Any questions, anything I can possibly answer?
Any questions, councilman?
Is Rocking, does Rockingham go through there now, or is it just, it's just plotted on the map?
It's plotted on the map, and there's gravel, it's been there, and we've lived there sixteen years, and it's been there forever. It looks like the original, uh, builder built the curb on, built half of the curb on the east side of Rockingham, but there's never been anything else done that we can tell, or I've seen.
And it's basically two block, well, in the, this is two blocks long or something like that, or block long?
Which one?
It is, uh, Rockingham's a block long.
It's three houses, it's three lots.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just trying to make.
We understand.
Does Darlington Drive continue on past the, the, what you've got?
Uh, what's proposed, or what was proposed on the, the plat to, the ninety-eight plat, is the best I can tell, uh, there, is there's a loop down at the end of Darlington. And then Sonoma, the furthest road north, just has a cul-de-sac or a turnaround, I don't know which.
So if, if this goes through as, as originally platted, Daytona will dead-end just farther down?
Yes, it'll further west.
And you don't have a problem with that, you just have a problem with the connecting street? And what is the issue with the connecting street?
More traffic coming in.
Just on Daytona?
Right.
You just want to keep it off of your street?
Cutting through, uh, it also makes a really wonderful, it looks like it'll make a really wonderful racetrack. You can come up there and make a loop, and you're driving on streets named after racetracks. So I mean, just come on, it's just one of those things.
So it appears that the developer will lose one lot if that street doesn't go through there, is that correct?
Well, if, it'll depend up to him, I mean, if he goes ahead and covers over the, he might hear you, he can tell you. There's other ways to do it, I mean, if we, if he just expands, I mean, I don't really want to tell him how to do his job, because it's not my business, I'm just interested in the safety of our street. But it looks like he could enlarge both tra, both of the two corner lots, and then maybe the lots behind him could be enlarged, and he could make up his money that, by not having to build anything extra, another house. I don't know, that's not my ballgame.
Okay, thank you.
Be up to him. I think there's a way to get around it, but. But as, as we understand it, as best we can find, Rock, uh, Rockingham is not a city street. I mean, he's building it, so it's probably not a city street.
What's that, Richard?
It hadn't been platted, with this acceptance of this plat, that right away would be a public street. The reason for the, I'm assuming why the engineer, uh, designed in this manner is, we're, are, we, we, our code says that it's a maximum of eight hundred feet for, per block. That's approximately thirteen hundred feet, Daytona's existing street down there is about thirteen hundred feet. When we constructed that, we turned that radius and put a base for all, kind of a temporary turnaround until the, the phases was built out. But I, I assume that's why they, 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 they have the, uh, cut-through road there, because, because of the block code.
You'd have one way in and one way out in Daytona for a lot of houses.
Yep.
There's, there's nothing down there after all, they have to use one of the end driveways, there's no turnaround down there, there's no block, there's no nothing. There was trees there until they started logging it to go on to the next, but there's nothing down there, they're using, uh, the end neighbor's driveway to turn around. There's never been no temporarily turnaround at all. Which, that could be a problem. And when, what was that meeting we went to?
Planning, planning zoning.
Yeah, the planning and zoning, and they had put it in there that, um, because there's no rocks, there's, there's nothing down there, it's just dirt, the road just ended. So they always had to use, the neighbor at the end, and they always had to use theirs, he's on one side and the neighbor's on the other side, they've always had to use their driveways to turn around, there's no way to turn around down there.
Is that on Daytona or on?
At, at the end of Daytona.
Okay.
The street just ends, and then it was, um, it was just dirt and some woods, and they, they cut that down, so now it's just mud, because he's going on to his next phase. And Rolling Hills Road is not in any way ready for all this more traffic.
Mayor, can I ask your name? Sorry, that, I, I gotta have procedures here, so can it, can you, you mind stepping to the podium maybe and, and stating your name and address, just, just for, for the record and, and, I'm sorry. I, I thought you were going to be very brief, and I was going to let you go, but I, I can't, so, sorry, go ahead.
Theda Decker, T H E D A.
Okay.
You're on Daytona as well.
When we came to the planning and zoning, it was brought up that, um, for the fire trucks, for turnaround, for cul-de-sac, there's nothing there, it just dead-ends. And then Rolling Hills Road is not ready for more traffic, Rolling Hills Road is not in very good condition anyway, and with the ups and downs, and, and now you're going to be adding all these more houses. We need Rolling Hills Road looked at as well to sustain all this more traffic.
The one, the one thing I'd like to finish, I don't know if I'm going to finish.
Yeah, go ahead, JT.
Is, when you look at the, what Richard was saying about the cut-through there for, um, it looks like he designed it so it would be not so long, how it worked, they didn't do that on, uh, Sonoma to Darlington. Uh, it doesn't show any cross-traffic up in there. Though, I, I don't know if anybody really knows what the deal was or how it was designed, but it looks like, kind of like it was an afterthought, like, well, we got it, we can do this. But they didn't think about the consequences. I mean, our street's filled with kids. Out of twenty-two houses, I think there's nine of them are retired folks, and the rest of them are youngsters. So, we're just trying to watch out for them, and we appreciate your help.
Richard, could you repeat which of the street code was on that for a block?
So our maximum's supposed to be eight hundred feet on per, on blocks, and I assume whenever this was built in the nineties, they got some sort of variance with the, showing them the preliminary plat proposing this, this road right here to connect. I assume that I wasn't, I wasn't part of that process, but I assume that's what happened.
I'm counting twelve hundred feet if I'm not mistaken.
Well, whenever I, you go from the center of the road to the end, so I, I just, I measured it today on Google Earth. It's right at thirteen hundred.
So from the center of Rolling Hill? Okay.
So, Richard, let me ask you this, would there be any alternatives to this, what we're looking at? That would work?
Yes.
Can we do this, could we take testimony from the public for the public comment, and then we, when we get to the ordinance, you guys are free to ask any questions you'd like of the staff, but.
No, that'd be fine.
Separate from the public hearing.
Sure.
It's just a block cleaner that way.
No, that's, that's fine, no, that's fine, that's fine. So any, any other public comments regarding this on the final plat? Yes. Go up and state your name and address if you don't mind, and.
Good evening, Mayor Carr, my name's Daniel McLean, I live at nine-two-four Daytona Drive.
Okay.
Now, my family and I, we, we moved to Lebanon and kind of threw a dart at the map when we left our last duty station, just said, yeah, this is where we're going to go. And we checked out the school district, we absolutely loved this town, loved the school district. And, uh, we started renting a home on Deja Drive, and I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with that street. I'm going to talk about a, a street that should have been named Daytona, that would have been it. And it was very dangerous for my children, every time they wanted to go out and ride their bicycle, fear of getting ran over, getting hit, we actually had, um, a girlfriend getting mad at a boyfriend, going side by side down the street at high speeds. And kids were out at that time, thankfully, nobody got hit or killed, uh, police were called and handled the situation, but still. Uh, so when my wife and I decided we were going to purchase a home, as we were looking, we made sure that one of our criterias was it needed to be on a cul-de-sac or a dead-end street. Because we have children, and we don't want to have to worry about them being out there playing on their bicycles or, um, playing basketball, or the fear of getting ran over. So we came across this house and fell in love with it, saw it was on a dead-end street, and made an offer, and here we are, and now we're finding out that they're wanting to add this cut-through through, and, uh, we love the close-knit community. We love the fact that all of our neighbors, we like to communicate and help each other out, and just adding more traffic, kind of the uncertainty, you don't, you don't know who they are. Right now, we know who's coming and going, we know who belongs on the street, who doesn't belong on the street, and so on and so forth. Adding the cut-through could potentially. Um, adding the cut-through could potentially increase in crime. Um, and also the deal with Rolling Hills too. I've seen guys do eighty, ninety miles an hour going down that street too. So there, there's a lot of issues, um, but primarily, I'm firm, I would like to have Daytona remain a dead-end street, but with a proper turnaround at the end. And then we still welcome the rest of the community on the other end. But just, we would like to remain a, a dead-end street. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel. Any other public comments? Yes. Come forward, please, state your name.
Jamie Davis and our family farm is on eighteen-three-one-seven Gateway Road. Uh, four generations. I don't know, is the developer here tonight?
Yeah.
Hey, neighbor, hey. Uh, we're concerned because it's been in the farm four generations. We do hay, there's gonna be a lot of debris. You know, how are we gonna keep people off of that? We've hunted there for years. That, what, what are the, how's that gonna work on stuff like that? People crossing our street, our property liabilities.
Hold on, do you have to, do you have to address us as, as council for, yeah. That'd be something you have to do on the side for that, so.
We're just, you know, we're concerned with, we've been there, I mean, my whole license, I've been too of, there's nobody there. So now we're gonna be talking sixty-five houses. We've got another neighbor's concerned as well. We have a creek, um, we don't want people in the creek. I don't want liability, you know, we'll, we'll, I mean, these are things down the road, but, you know, we don't want debris coming from building, construction sites in the property. What, what, we're just looking to the future. What, what, we didn't get to make it to the planning coordinating meeting. So we're here tonight, kinda, I don't know if this was the right meeting for that, but we're here to kinda see and kinda give our concerns for us as well.
And we also wanna make sure, like, there is an old fence right there for the boundary. Is there gonna be a new fence built? Everything I've got to keep people off of our property where the, where the subdivision's gonna end? And that, cause then we'll, we'll put, you know, signs all on there, no trespassing, everything I've got. So we're doing our part to, but I can see, you know, kids in that, in that neighborhood wanting to come down there and play in the, in the field and the country and the creek and everything there, so.
And we definitely don't want anybody getting hurt. We don't want any kind of liabilities. We, we, we wanna know what we need to be looking into now before things get really going. I mean, they've already started clearing everything, it's already, and if they're gonna be burning, you know, there's a lot of debris there, they're gonna wanna burn a lot of stuff. It's just, it's concerning for us being that close.
Okay. And what was your name, sir?
Steve Davis.
Okay.
Okay, do we, will we have?
Yeah, that, you'll have to have that all, I mean, that, that's, that's a question for them or that. Thank you. Any other public comments regarding those final plats? Yes.
I don't know why my name wasn't called in this regard. Andy Miller. A.J. Miller.
We weren't down to you yet.
Oh, did, did, did he miss you on the public comments on the top? Is that what you're talking about? Okay. Well, let's, uh, whenever we come back out of, out of public hearing, I'll come back to you, if that's all right. Uh, we're in public hearing regarding all the final plats right now. I can't, um, and you wrote down suburbs on here? Is it regarding these plats or?
No.
Okay. Whenever we come back out of public hearing, I'll, I'll entertain that. Sorry, okay? I won't forget about you, Annie.
My fault, Annie.
Thank you. All right, any other, uh, comments regarding? Okay, we'll go on down to, uh, the final plat of Arrow Landing then. Yeah, Arrow Landing Phase One, South Jefferson. That's where I'm at.
Apologies, yep.
Yep, letter E.
So the first one here is the final plat. Arrow Landing Phase One, twenty-four hundred block of South Jefferson Avenue. Um, I think you have in there, you see we have fifty lots, um, proposed for duplexes, which means a hundred doors. Um, looking to do a final plat for this, um, again, before they can start construction, it must be properly platted. It's RS two. I mean, it's have, they have met everything we needed for final plat, for preliminary to final plat. That's what we have tonight is that. We have, um, we have our, our entrances and our exits for that, that part of that Phase One for that subdivision. I think, um, we, we don't see any issues with this.
All right, any, uh, public comments regarding Arrow Landing Phase One? Okay, see nobody come forward. We'll go on down to, uh, letter F there. Rezoning of Arrow Landing, the same thing, I guess, there from, from CL Limited.
Previously, we had it rezoned, um, CL and they want to rezone that portion next to Jefferson. And you'll see in the hatch part to rezone that to RS two, so they can continue the housing to the, to the access of, uh, Jefferson. Um, that's what they're asking to rezone for that. And, um, let me see what else we have here for it. So it's just aligning the entrance from Jefferson on it. It'll get you directly into that subdivision and you'll start with duplexes directly off Jefferson. And then on the north and south side, that will still say CL. I don't have that shown there, but there, that's not being asked to re, re, just to rezone, just that portion adjacent to Jefferson is being asked to be re-zoned.
Is that the five acres?
Up, up front, yes.
And these are the duplexes that will back up to like what is Waterman Estates is. Okay, just making sure I'm-
Are those gonna connect eventually?
Connect.
Like Ozark Drive or something's gonna come through into that area?
Oh, yes. The next phase down, they will connect to Ozark and then it will also connect. You see further down, there's another access close to the, between the two churches and the social security office. There will be access back to Jefferson there. So there will be two, two ways in and out of this, um, directly onto Jefferson and another way through Ozark.
Okay. All right, any public comments regarding rezoning of Arrow Landing Phase One? See new one come forward. I've, now entertain a motion to come out of public hearing then.
Jordan moved.
Jordan moved. Garner seconded. Roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, we're now at a public hearing and, and, uh, I'll, to go back to, to public comments, Andy, I apologize about that, but go ahead.
Okay.
We'll give you the floor to go back into there, so.
I really appreciate letting me speak. You sure have some beautiful things coming in the city. The pictures they showed while you were not here were just absolutely awesome.
They are.
But we have a lot of things going on underground that aren't so pretty. I think you will all know and can understand, I don't have to talk about that. This all happened almost ten months ago. And Mr. Lau.
Thank you.
The guy that lives there now, very good friend of mine, the son of Attorney Lau. Let me get one to you. In case you have to defend the city on a lawsuit. Mr. Lau, the attorney, was told thirty years ago by somebody from the city that he should never put toilet paper in his toilet. For thirty years, that family has not put toilet paper in their toilet. You see what has happened. Uh, eight months, ten months ago, as I said at the city council meeting of June the tenth, nineteen-twenty-four, I was woken real early in the morning. It's all taken care of. Mr. Lau's paid for everything, but this city has refused to turn it over to your adjuster to pay for it, your insurance company adjuster. He called me. I didn't call him, but he called me. And I just wanna ask Mr. Carr, Mayor Carr, who should I give this information to? This is an invoice for everything that Mr. Lau paid for. So that maybe we can get it paid in thirty days. If I wouldn't pay my water bill or electric bill for six months, I wouldn't have water or electric either one. And I saw here where we just approved three hundred thousand dollars for beautification. Maybe we oughta make our sewers a little bit more beautiful. That's all I have. Who should I give this to?
Okay. Well, I, um, I'm, I'm not sure, but I will, um, I guess I, I could take it and-
Okay, thank you kindly.
That doesn't mean that it, uh, necessarily is, is correct or anything like that, but I'll, I'll certainly take a look at it.
It was given to a member in this council or in this meeting.
Okay. We'll certainly look at it. Thanks, sir. Okay. Now on to our ordinances. And, uh, no second readings tonight, but we do have a, um, let's see, Council Bill sixty-eight-twenty-nine. First and second reading there on the ISC billboard. Any questions regarding that, counsel? All right, first reading then.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the final plat of ISC billboard to the City of Lebanon, Leclae County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Garner, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay, second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the final plat of ISC, ISC billboard to the City of Lebanon, Leclae County, Missouri.
Move on second.
Take a second.
Evans and Jordan on the second. Roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight-twenty-nine becomes ordinance seven thousand seventy-two. Uh, Council Bill sixty-eight-thirty, which is the final replat of Lot Twelve and South Hat of Lot Eleven, Block Sixteen of the Lewis addition. Any questions on that, counsel? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the final plat of replat of Lot Twelve in the south half of Lot Eleven, Block Sixteen, Lewis addition to the City of Lebanon, Leclae County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan and Mitchell, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the final plat of replat of Lot Twelve in the south half of Lot Eleven, Block Sixteen, Lewis addition to the City of Lebanon, Leclae County, Missouri.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Mitchell and Evans on the second. Roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight-thirty becomes ordinance seven thousand seventy-three. And Council Bill sixty-eight-thirty-one, which is the final plat of Bridge Creek Phase One subdivision. Councilman Atkins, did you have a question you wanted to ask about that earlier?
I don't think so, did I?
You did. I believe your question was relative to whether the, there was another option for the street.
Oh, yes. Well, yes, sir.
As far as where they would put a connecting road or what?
Well, any, any other, I, I see these concerns and I've talked to these people. I understand them.
Okay.
Um, I also understand that, you know, they bought the property knowing that there's some empty lots and those things happen like that. But is there any other way to look at it that can make everybody happy or not?
That would be for the developer to get a, an engineer to lay out another option. That's not for us to, uh, design subdivisions. All, all I was speaking to was our code states that, uh, eight hundred feet is a maximum distance for blocks. Now, obviously, there's variances that ha, that happen.
I, I do have a question looking at this map. If, if all, if the only homes are these twenty-one right now on Daytona, if you don't, how would you get to these three lot? I'm looking at this map and I know you can't, how, how would you get to these three lots without some kind of a street?
Okay. Only thing you can do is make two lots, take the middle lot that would be landlocked and-
You'd have to increase the-
The other would be larger lots then, which the developer's gonna lose a lot. But that still doesn't fix the problem of a street. Right now it's thirteen hundred feet. And what's it gonna be if you-
More than what, two lots more or something?
No.
No.
One, two, three. One, two, three, four, five.
Five more.
Yeah, a lot. So that's gonna be way over our, our accepted block length.
Eighteen hundred feet.
The other problem is emergency vehicles getting blocked in there or something happened where you can't get out of there. There's no other way to get out. I'm assuming that's why we have a limit on length of blocks.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And because I, I don't do north-south real well, so I'm gonna do up and down right here. Once Darlington, eventually, you have to have a way then for these houses. So where, where, is that gonna be the only way to get, would be a loop this way? Or is there gonna be something where, that will come down up here? I'm sorry, I just don't do directions very well, Richard.
Whatever the developer has to, has to, has to plat in a manner to meet our code.
I mean, our subdivision code spells out what they're required to do. I mean, you know, these are considered to be administrative proceedings versus a legislative, meaning, you know, we set a checklist, we set the rules of the road by establishing a subdivision development code that lays out what you provide in a preliminary plat and then a final plat. Uh, our preliminary plating language is a little exceptional in that there's no time limit on how good a preliminary plat is good for. Hence why somebody could come in with a plat thirty years old from ninety-five, ninety-eight, whatever it was, and say, hey, this was passed, you know, before anybody was there and we're going straight to final with it. Um, so, you know, they're required to do these things. In the preliminary plating process, the Planning and Zoning Commission has the ability to impose certain conditions and really work a lot more with the developer. However, since this was preliminary platted thirty years ago, that window sort of closed. And so what we're left with now is, do they meet the requirements of our code? And at the point at which we're here, Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed and said yes. Codes is reviewed and said yes. And functionally, you're the final check of that list of whether or not this complies with our, our subdivision development code.
Richard, do, do we have speed bumps anywhere in town? If the concern is about cars racing up and down, Rockingham, how about speed bumps or some, some other form?
Speed bumps are not recognizable on public streets. The only thing that would be recognized that would be similar to that would be what they call speed table that basically that, that's designed around pedestrian crosswalks.
Richard, I'd like to address the situation of the Rolling Hills Road also, being able to take on that. It's a narrow road.
So it's, it's scheduled for an overlay, uh, this, this coming, this next budget year.
Okay, are they gonna widen it as well?
I assume we'll put a little bit on, on both edges, but, and we can't put a whole lot in there without, uh, without significant, uh, earthwork. Our experience is as soon as you widen it, you will start, you'll, the speed will go up. I mean, for some of you that, that live out on, on the south side on Tower Road, we widened that, made it a much safer road, but the speeds do, did go up.
Hold on, this, sorry. Okay. Counsel, any other questions? All right, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by- An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Ridge Creek Phase One subdivision to the city of Lebanon, La Clee County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second. Wall and Muchler. Roll call, please.
Atkins.
You know, I wish it was a different way, but if it meets all the codes and everything, we don't have a choice, as far as I'm concerned, so, yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Ridge Creek Phase One subdivision to the city of Lebanon, La Clee County, Missouri.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Jordan and Mitchell on the second. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-one becomes ordinance seven thousand seventy-four. And Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-two, which is the final plat of Ridge Creek Phase Two subdivision. Any comments or questions, counsel? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Ridge Creek Phase Two subdivision to the city of Lebanon, La Clee County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan and Wall. Roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-two becomes ordinance seven thousand seventy-five. All right, thank you, Christina. All right, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-three. This is the formerly, me formally appointing Troy Schulte to the position of city administrator and then also agreeing to his employment contract, which you guys have all got to see and as well, so. Any questions or comments on that, counsel? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an employment agreement and appointing Troy Schulte to the position of city administrator.
Motion to approve.
Second. Jordan and Garner. Roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an appointment agreement and appointing Troy Schulte to the position of city administrator.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Wall and Mitchell on the second. Roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-three becomes ordinance seven thousand seventy-six. And congratulations to Troy, we're looking forward to welcoming him to the city. He was unable to be here tonight, but certainly looking forward to welcoming him, and April first will be his start date on that, so, right around the corner, next, a week from today, in fact, so. Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-four. Richard?
Yeah, Mayor, counsel, this is an ordinance to vacate a portion of Bry Street. We're working with the schools with their improvements down there to the high school, and they've requested us to vacate that piece. They're planning on constructing a significant parking lot on the south side of the road, and it will have pedestrian crossings, and it's, it's just gonna be better suited to be a private piece of a property instead of a public piece of property and have so much public pedestrian interface there. So, we're proposing to vacate that just a little bit south of King Street. We have one house that needs, still yet, that needs access.
Any questions, counsel?
What's that gonna do to the, the one that comes from the light towards the school?
So, we, Jacket Junction is not a public street, it's actually part of the school's parking lot. And so we essentially...
Excuse me, can you guys, if you guys want to talk, you can go out to the lobby if you want to, so, sorry, thank you.
Bry Street as it is today goes down there and just kind of terminates at, at Jacket Junction, so...
I'm used to going through a long time ago.
Any other questions, comments? All right, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, vacating a portion of Bry Street located in Section Three Township Thirty-four North, Range Sixteen West of Lebanon, La Clee County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Evans. Roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of ISC billboard to the city of Lebanon, La Clee County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Evans. Roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Ivy Roofing Incorporated for the roof replacement of the city-owned building located at three twenty-five B Harwood Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell and Muchler. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Ivy Roofing Incorporated for the roof replacement of the city-owned building located at three twenty-five B Harwood Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell and Muchler. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Ivy Roofing Incorporated for the roof replacement of the city-owned building located at three twenty-five B Harwood Avenue.
So move on to second.
Got Evans on the motion.
Second.
And Jordan, second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-five comes ordinance seven thousand seventy-eight. And Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-six.
This would be for the replacement of the four pedestrian doors in the Wallace Building. Doors are in pretty bad shape. This was budgeted in the project remodel over there at the Wallace Building. Staff recommends entering a contract with Knight Construction for the replacement of the doors for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Be happy to answer any questions about that.
Is there anything else that we're gonna do to the building?
We finished the breezeway this week. The doors and the lighting in the parking lot, we've already purchased all that, we just, we gotta get it installed, but that will wrap up the Wallace Building project.
Looks really good.
It looks nice. The breezeway really turned out nice.
It did.
Kind of changed the looks of everything over there, so, but yeah, that'll finish it out.
Any other questions, comments? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Knight Construction for the replacement of four doors at the Wallace Building.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell and Atkins. Roll call, please.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Knight Construction for the replacement of four doors at the Wallace Building.
Move on to second. Second, second.
Jordan and Evans on the second. Roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the purchase of chairs and dollies for the exhibition hall from Page Office Supply.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan and Garner. Roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Ivy Roofing Incorporated for the roof replacement of the city-owned building located at three twenty-five B Harwood Avenue.
So move on to second.
Got Evans on the motion.
Second.
And Jordan, second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the purchase of chairs and dollies for the exhibition hall from Page Office Supply.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan and Garner. Roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-seven comes ordinance seven thousand eighty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, appreciate it. Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-eight. Travis?
Mayor, counsel, this is for the purchase of electric underground materials to reroute the underground lines. I think there's, the existing three-phase lines, three-phase lines are in the path of
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-six becomes ordered in seven thousand seventy-nine. Uh, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-seven.
This would be bids were received for the replacement of fifty exhibition hall chairs and three dollies. The current exhibition hall chairs are showing significant signs of wear and tear. The chair purchase was part of the two thousand twenty-five CIP plan. After reviewing the bids, staff reached out to the vendor to provide pricing on an additional fifty chairs and two dollars, two dollies totaling a hundred chairs and five dollies. Staff recommends purchasing the exhibition chairs from Page Office Supply for the price of twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Be happy to answer any questions about that.
These are the red, the red chairs, correct?
They're black now, but they were red.
Yeah, the ones, yeah.
That's the ones we're replacing.
With the metal frame and all, yeah.
How much, how much per chair?
I think, I'd have to look back. I'm going to tell you this, I'm pretty positive it's right, it was a hundred and fourteen dollars a chair. When we purchased in twenty-four, we give a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and sixty-six dollars a chair, so they had actually, we found a different vendor with better pricing and and it was, there was a significant difference in the pricing from last year to this year. We have it budgeted for two more years and then I think that puts us close to having all the originals replaced.
Do they come assembled?
Yeah, they do.
That's quite, that's quite, that's quite a decrease.
We shop that pretty hard.
Here's your chair and here's your bolts.
Make him up ahead.
All right, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the purchase of chairs and dollies for the exhibition hall from Page Office Supply.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Garner, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second. Wall and Atkins on the second, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Arrow Landing Phase One to the city of Lebanon, LaCree County, Missouri.
Most approved. Second.
Evans and Wall, roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Arrow Landing Phase One to the city of Lebanon, LaCree County, Missouri.
Most approved. Second. Second.
Jordan and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight thirty-nine becomes ordered in seven thousand eighty-two. It's all for our first and second readings, but I do have a first reading tonight of Council Bill sixty-eight forty, which is for the rezoning of Arrow Landing Phase One for the entrance there that Christina highlighted, going from CL Limited to RS Two. Any questions regarding that? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the rezoning of the Arrow Landing Phase One subdivisions entrance located in the twenty-four-hundred block of South Jefferson Avenue from CL Limited Commercial to RS Two Residential.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell and Evans, roll call, please.
Wall.
No.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight forty passes first reading and be placed on the docket
next. Council meeting. Okay, that's all for ordinances tonight. Move to comments, any comments from staff in the audience?
Yes, Mayor, Council, we pleased to let you know that we are participating in Rescue Task Force this week, which is the second level of active shooter response that was begun last year right before I arrived with the single officer response. So, PD, fire and the sheriff's office worked together to to do this training together and collaborated with the schools, Missouri School Board Association and Mercy EMS. So, that's a two-day course, we're offering it twice this week. Half, one full course was funded by the Missouri School Board Associations, we're pretty excited about that. It's a, it's, it's outstanding training that will protect our community in the future if if it, that need should arise.
Great. Is that, is it just local or is it, you said training, are you training, extending that to other organizations or is it just?
We invited a lot, it's specifically for our area, our stakeholders in the area, I'd say is a probably better way to say that, not necessarily just local because all the law enforcement in the region are going to respond if we, if a terrible event ever happens here. And so, we've reached out and invited other agencies to participate to better benefit our community because, you know, the more people that are prepared to serve our community, the better off we're all going to be.
Yep. Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't speak about my staff. Last Friday, our county and our surrounding communities, Lake Ozark area, I know that we're in a terrible fire hazard, as well as a windstorm that damaged Harwood Manor, took about a third of the roof off of it. We responded to that, fortunately there was no injuries and assisted with that along with Christina's office. We also called some local contractors to come in and help us evaluate that situation. In the middle of all that, I had units responding to natural cover fires with structures in danger in the Lake Ozark area in Camden County. If you don't know, Camden County suffered about twelve lost structures and countless outbuildings and cars and we were able to assist them. We were also able to assist our own county fire departments with numerous fires and within the city, responded to two structure fires within minutes of each other. One of them fortunately was actually not a fire, was quickly extinguished by the homeowner. The other one was a little bit of a fire in the basement, but there was no injuries in any of them except to one of our firefighters did become ill and was taken care of and had off-duty staff come in to help respond to all that at a moment's notice without hesitation. And I'm really grateful for their efforts and everything they went through that day and that week.
Richard?
We, through the storms, we just, we had some insignificant damages, some broken poles here and there and mostly related to telephone or attachments, but we got those taken care of. We did however, provide mutual aid to Rala Municipal Utilities, they hit, they got hit bad down there and we was able to send a crew down there to help out with restoring power down there.
Great, thank you, Richard. Lacy? Counselor?
Ben? First of all, I wanted to follow up with what Chief Snyder was talking about, you know, our team really went above and beyond, I think, to work with the folks at Harwood Manor, you know, those residents had to be displaced from their home and find shelter in short order. I know Christina's office worked very closely with them to make sure that they found housing.
I'll also say thank you to the Love Your Neighbor Project here in town, they really stepped up and I believe secured donations necessary to feed those seniors because they were displaced from their home and needed food, needed meals and I know that they were, they were raising on that. So, the community really came together in a difficult time, that was a kind of a scary, scary storm, you know, with that roof shearing off, we had to close the park, close the street even. I know Chris saw a number of people, you know, kind of out there gawking at what was going on. It's not where you want to be when the roof's blowing off and, you know, large chunks of it are flying, so, you know, we, we just, we did a really nice job with that and I wanted to say thank you to our staff on that. And Richard, I know that the city administrator, Rala, is a very good friend of mine and they were very appreciative of our crew coming down to help. That was, you know, it's really nice that we help our neighbors like that, that goes a long way and builds camaraderie across different communities. Wanted to touch on one or two items that the, the folks that were speaking about the Daytona subdivision had brought up. There was a question as to whether a non-recorded preliminary plat is valid. I could tell you our code does not require preliminary plats to be recorded at the courthouse. Can't tell you off the top of my head what state law says about it, but our code pretty closely mirrors the requirements laid out there. So, I do not believe that that recording of the preliminary is required. It is required for a final plat within a time period after its its approval. So, you know, the plats that were approved here tonight will have to go to the courthouse. I have been talking to Christina's office for a while now and really just brought it up, that we think that is a problem, that these preliminary plats have no expiration. That's somewhat abnormal, if you look at the code from pretty much any other community in Missouri, the standard typically is it's good for a year after its approval and then if you final plat any part of it, you get a significant extension, I've seen as much as ten years after any part of it has gone through a final plat. So, that gives the developer time to work with an existing plan. You know, I, we hear a lot from folks on these projects where somebody came in and preliminary plotted something before any of them even had a home out there, right? And circumstances change, codes change, you know, it, it's important that that be looked at again, I think at the preliminary stage. So, we'll be working with Plan, the Plan Commission and Christina's office to probably bring forward some sort of a code change regarding that. I don't know that there's anything we can do about plats that were previously approved, they probably have a free pass, but certainly going forward, there should be some sort of reasonable restriction on on how that preliminary process works and how long that's good for. You know, we, it, you know, there are just, you know, certain, certain abilities and the ability, for instance, to place conditions and and greater flexibility at the preliminary stage versus the final stage, might have helped to avoid some of this, you know, given that some of these houses developed and then it sat for twenty-five years, so. I think that's pretty much all I have tonight and I wanted to apologize, Councilman Atkins, for cutting you off when you were talking to Richard there. I've learned the hard way over the years that it's best to let the public speak during public comment and then all of you are free to ask me as many questions as you want once we get to that ordinance.
All right, Councilman Atkins.